All right, I've got 5:31. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the Police and Fire Committee. We have tonight a resolution accepting the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Springdale Fire Training Facility Project 18 BPF-7 and be presented by Chief Irwin.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Councilman Mayor. Basically, what we have is contract to complete our training facility. If you remember, a few months ago, it came to be in Columbia, we were a little over. We were estimating probably about 2.8 million. We're gonna borrow about 300,000 out of that in 30 months to get completed. Wyman has ran the numbers. I'm glad to tell you that the bids came in with over 200 companies bidding all total on this project, about $2,805,890, which is just 5,000 in the loan we kind of estimated. We've got some good numbers in. We're looking to do all of this stuff that we need to do out there, including all of the art circus area that is willing to be for the training areas. And we still have enough money left probably in bonds by just to do all the things, furnishings, fixtures, and equipment as well. So I hope they'll be able to complete this as well as state and county. We'll get the procedure considering what we call the down problem that I think we're having.
Sayin', you probably won't have to dip into that.
That is awesome news, Chief. Thank you very much. Anybody having a discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, move it forward. Checkmate, press.
Got a motion in a second. Move forward, all those in favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, like sign. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. I will close out the Fire and Police Committee, and we'll go to the Ordinance Committee.
We have ordinance accepting the Northwest Arkansas National Airport, seconding restated amendment agreement pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-362-103, declaring emergency for other purposes. And Mr. Kate, do you want to elaborate on this?
Sure.
And I see he's connecting to audio, and our airport, one of our airport commissioners was here, too.
Andrew Taman met with me, and Ernest, you were in that meeting also, I think. I don't remember specific. Fairly minor to me. Something wouldn't be of any consequence.
Andrew, are you where you can hear us now?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me now?
Sure. Would you like to highlight any of these changes that you want the Council to be aware of?
Actually, we have Josh Wisely with Connor and Winters. He should be on the phone. He might be able to speak to it a little better than I could, if that's okay.
Sure.
Josh, are you on?
I'm on.
Great. Take it away.
Thank you, Andrew, Mr. Kate, and members. We've got four changes in the restated and amended agreement that are proposed. The first one is to change the name to the Northwest Arkansas National Airport. And the thinking behind that is the airport now has direct flights going to the coasts, going to many other places in between. It reflects the growth and the success of the airport. And it would also help our efforts to attract more flights, more carriers, and possibly commercial operations to locate in and around the airport. The second change is changing some of the language to make it gender neutral. Our chair right now is Blake Woolsey, and we don't want to refer to her as the chairman. So it would reflect that she is the chair and make changes for other titles as well. The third change is updating the Conflict of Interest section to allow it to be more fluid, to allow the XNA Board to modify the conflicts policy as federal and state laws change. And the fourth change would be to reflect that the specific powers in the agreement are, they originally were listed in the Enabling Act, and that act has been amended numerous times. And rather than specifically list out all the powers from the act, we'd like to reference the act itself. That way, we don't have to amend the agreement each time the General Assembly makes an amendment to the enabling legislation. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
I'll have a seat. Those four changes he just outlined or listed, attached to your agenda.
Changing the name of the airport, do you really expect that to bring more people in or more airlines in?
Well, the thinking was, we don't want to make ourselves appear as a regional, smaller airport, when in fact, we are larger. Whether it would actually change what airlines come in, I don't know. But perception oftentimes is reality. And I'll also let Andrew or Aaron add anything they may have.
Thanks, Josh. This is Andrew. I would say, it really does come down to a perception issue. If, when we have meetings with airlines at these events we go to, we have about 20 minutes. And if the first five minutes is trying to explain to them how we're not a small sleepy little airport, it kind of takes away the focus of what we're trying to convince them to do. We just felt like, you know, we have, in normal times, where we're not in this crisis we're in now, we have, you know, both coasts, we have national coverage. Certainly airports with far fewer routes, you know, use this title. We just felt it was most appropriate, and the Board agreed and actually passed it as a resolution with the Board in December. But we wanted to include that in this agreement as well.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to point out that Little Rock changed the name of theirs, and their national airport. And we're quickly approaching the implant that they have in Little Rock. So people that are dealing with airports around, it means something to them. It may not mean much to your eyes, still things in place, and still getting down to the main old circuit road. But a lot of people, it does make a difference.
Phil, I just had one question. Is there a criteria to change it from a regional to a national, or is it just a title change? To hopefully, as suggested, would attract more opportunities?
Is there a criteria, Andrew?
I could barely hear you there, Commissioner Tallo, but I did hear her question. There is no actual criteria from the FAA or anybody else on what's a national, international, or regional airport. So it really is just the spelling, really. The joke I made in December is, changing it requires one word, and that's it. We feel like, based on what other airports kind of have adopted the name, we more than would meet kind of what is common.
You might say, like, calling this the town of Burnsville rather than the city of Little Rock. That's not a...
No, I'm not saying this is a bad idea. I think it's a good idea. I just wanted to know if there was some particular measurement that changed you from a regional to a national automatically.
Well, one of the main things is that we fly from the east coast to the west coast, numerous destinations, LA, and New York, and Washington DC. So it does better describe what kind of service we can get here at this airport.
Any other questions, comments? Are there a motion? Move that we accept this, or move this on to the Council's recommendation to pass.
Second.
Any other further comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like opposed, same sign. We'll move it forward as a recommendation for approval at the next regular council meeting. Is there anything else? Come to the Ordinance Committee. If not, we stand adjourned.
First item on our agenda is the, having to do with sale of our property on Meadow Street. Talk to that.
Well, I think Derek's been working with Ernest mostly on this. Derek came, oh, I guess several months ago, Derek, and he had an idea, and we kind of changed, I think, your direction a little bit. You might just go ahead and explain what you're proposing.
Thanks, Eric. Let me just take a quick question. Back in December of 2002, how they were purchased off of the two 1300, basically, such a property, so I thought I might develop an opportunity, I might have taken off the purchase later. Short-term goal would be to acquire and then three years, four years, to activate the space where the city is pleased with the use of the space. Maybe the law term would be, of course, to talk to the city, yeah, give it downtown, I'd like to do twenty six, thirty seven, so I approach the mayor with the opportunity, I've worked with Ernest, who we are today, and I think that I've spent a lot of time with council members, and I'm just trying to draft it in office, and I think it brings the council to the community. That's true there from a high standpoint, high market standpoint, and if you have some things happen that are unknown, the front project, the city needs the space, the law is up to expect, if you're willing to work with the city, to pull on that property, so it would be. But for myself, just have the opportunity to enjoy, and we want that property now, to develop, or if it's a might, we all, if we're in the game, we'll do it as well.
I have a question. Derek, have you had an appraisal? Has the city had an appraisal done on this property? Appraised at...
Current appraisal.
That's, you're right. Well, it wasn't that long ago. It was Tex Hall.
That was a couple, three years ago.
Four years ago. Is it four?
Yeah.
It was in August.
Yeah. So we do not have a current appraisal.
That's the last one we got.
Okay.
And that appraisal was... It's 3/20. Was for 3/20.
But we need a current appraisal, number one. Then, number two, you don't ever tie something up for 180 days with a refundable deposit. And if we even were going to enter into this contract, this deposit, number one, is way too low. Number two, has to be non-refundable. And then, number three, until we determine what our real needs are, because we're gonna, after the Parks Department moves out of this, Denise is gonna be moving in there. And until we really know exactly what the, what our ultimate uses need to be, we don't even need to be considering selling this, until we make sure that we've got the new sprasse house up and everybody in it, and moved in, so we don't, we don't need the property. But until that, I'm not in favor of entering into any sort of a contract until we find out what our, what our long-term needs are. Number two, we have to have a current appraisal. And anytime you tie any commercial property up for 180 days, it's never refundable. Number two, you don't ever tie up a $425,000 deal for a $3,250 deposit. Just doesn't work.
I have done some market research, and I see a lot of people sort of, you know, it's not twelve months, it's a little, it's a day, online sale, location, as we are coming up with the number that we have, so just so you know, just some recent time.
This would, this would be contingent on an appraisal, but would...
Yeah.
Walk us through the timeline a little bit, because I know, Doc, let's talk about the options moving forward after the 180 days, which is basically six months, right? And we know we're still gonna be in there then, and, Doc, did get some news just this past week, Wyman, about the COVID-related delay on the concrete panels for the building. But we don't know yet how that's going to affect, how that's going to affect our timeline on that. There are, there is the possibility for some more delays. The problem is, I don't know how, how they'll fall in that. But walk us through what happens on this proposed contract, Derek, after the 180 days.
Since we first met, that August 31st timeline is not...
Okay. So I know there was an, posed an opportunity to extend that.
On three months.
On three-month extension, which would get us to December 1 of 2021.
The reason why that's not achievable?
Panels, number one.
We've got the concrete, the concrete panels that'll go on the exterior of the building. They're manufactured in, they're precast in Mississippi. And that area happens to be a hotspot for COVID, so they've had to lay some folks off. And they're expecting a delay on those, on that delivery, anywhere, what was it, 45 to 60 days. Now, that doesn't mean the project will be delayed that long, because there's hopefully other things they could be doing. But I, it's just, it's an example of a delay.
Yeah. Why was July?
180 days from December.
Thinking we were going, I thought it was...
At one time, it was October.
Of next year.
Yes. But what's the latest, Wyman? Have they given us an updated one? 1st of November of 2021.
2021.
So this, this would push us up against, if it is, if it stays at November 1, we're still, we're cutting it kind of close if we've got to be out by, even with an extension, if we've got to be out by December 1. Or, you know, I'd like to avoid paying rent, is my view, you know?
Why did we pick, even if it was October, why were we...
Well, this is, this is Derek's proposal, so, yeah.
That could possibly be backed up again. We just don't know.
I appreciate that. And I would like for us to, before we get locked into a contract, you know, reiterate what Overton said, and try to get an appraisal, and consider the timeline, and maybe a non-refundable deposit. I think all those things are important. I don't know why, and maybe you can help me, waiting until we're out of that before you start the purchasing process.
I think those are good points. I'm less concerned about the appraisal, because we can put the contingency on that. But...
The timeline.
Yeah. But the timeline, and fairness to Derek, he's working off the timeline we used to have, and he didn't know that it had been adjusted some.
So the only thing I would say about Mike's question on the refundable deposit, you know, we're not gonna be doing anything with the building for six months anyway, so that part doesn't really bother me. And it's after six months, according to this, that it comes non-refundable, Mike, after six months, right?
If you're gonna tie any commercial property up for a period of time, you're gonna have an...
Well, it's not like we were planning on selling that building the next six months.
Well, but there, no, but also, there are other buyers that might be interested in the, in the property.
All I would say is that maybe 3,500 is not, duh.
No.
I agree with you on that. But I don't, I don't really have a big problem with the six-month period, because after six months, especially if it's gonna be the whole next year, it is gonna be non-refundable.
I agree with Jeff.
What are the problems with the control side?
What?
If I could throw a science, you know, I'm not...
We're the city of Springdale. We're not, I don't know what you think wrong with that building. Derek, have you considered just a right of first refusal? Under the circumstances, though, as suggested, that's, I know, Mike, you feel different, Michael Lawson, you feel differently, and I don't know, and maybe Amelia. It just seems that this is a premature action, not on your part, but on our part. I mean, this is public money that we're gonna tie up, and we don't know, I mean, with all the growth in Springdale right now, and with the standards that are now for the downtown area, there's a lot going on, and greater things to come. There could be, as Mike suggested, a buyer out there, or buyers, that becomes a bidding war for this property, and then we lose another opportunity. Not that I don't want you there, or your opportunity there.
Now, I will, I will say that if there is a culvert that's under Little Rock, so it goes to the back door, and it's a, 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 it's[1798.12]
Under that, I've been under the Apollo, but. Yeah, if y'all don't want, if y'all don't want to do this right now, that's what'll happen. We'll delay it.
Well, the advantage, you know, just, just downtown thinking, Derek has a little bit of a, more of a reason for wanting it than maybe just somebody else, because he's hoping to get the whole block, felt the whole block. I'm thinking there that maybe that creates a better development, I don't know. I don't know, that's, that's part of the reason, though, right?
Well, there, there's some comfort in knowing who's buying things, but we can't, but that, there are no guarantees, there are no, but there are no guarantees, even so, yeah.
Like the loan committee.
Oh, you got a conflict there. You can't vote, you got a conflict.
Well, this property was for sale, how many times did we get offers when I was on the council before?
Well, we had, we just had one that we turned down when they wanted to put a daycare in there that Tex Hope brought to us, that.
I think there was a reason, I think there was something back, like in the early twenty ten?
Well, I know.
That was the.
We've gotten two or three of them, I know.
Well, I don't remember, we've actually took any action on any that came forward other than the one that, about the daycare center, is all I remember.
And as I remember, this is the best price I've heard for this building so far. I don't, I do agree with you, though, thirty-five hundred is not enough.
Well, and who's to say, just, maybe there are other folks that might be interested under the same terms.
Right.
And it'd be only fair to open it up if that's.
Another thing I see here.
If we make a determination early that we want to sell it, open it up to let other people see if they might be interested, but I still, until we really know what our needs are for the building long, how many, how long we're going to need the building, I don't see that.
Right, and that's part of what I'm saying here, Mike, is this other thing is the closing, where, where if we put it off for three months, it's going to cost us fifteen hundred dollars?
No.
No way. I can't see that, you know? I just, you know, not if we, not if we did let it go, you know? It is a good price, I think, from what I've heard in the past, but I don't know, I think I can do it right now.
Yeah, but Jim, what if we extended the closing date?
Because we didn't have that fifteen hundred dollar fee, and, and he bumped his earnings money.
Closing date, or would it, would we accomplish the same thing if we got another extension of the building?
Well, without paying.
Yeah.
Plus same thing.
Right.
But it might be better to close earlier anyway. I don't know.
Action or ask for more information?
I still think an appraisal is worthwhile. How long does appraisal real estate people, how long is an appraisal good for? Is it sixty days, ninety days, six months?
So, the only reason we'd want to do an appraisal is if you want to continue.
Negotiating this.
That's a good point.
Yeah, there's no need to spend any money on appraisal.
If we're not going to move forward with this.
Well, that's a good point.
I mean, we don't have to. Here, we'd have Tom probably. Again, I think we need to decide whether we want to move forward with more discussion of this, or if, if there's interest in it, then we could look at the appraisal, but if there's not interest in it, then come back to it. Open for a motion. Sorry, Derek, not tonight. It's just, it's, no, no action.
You can bring back down the.
Yeah, no action was taken, so.
You might, you might want to look at a few things based on what you heard tonight. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
We still wish you the best.
Was there a third item on, that got added?
Uh, yeah, Jeff, we had a, we, I, I contacted you about it, and the agenda had already gone out.
What was it?
It was, uh, you got a resolution there.
Resolution? Let's go ahead and deal with that one.
Prepare, it's a, it's one of those where we had a, we got an invoice after the agenda went out from milestone for the criminal justice building that exceeded a million dollars.
Does anyone have any objection, since this wasn't actually on the agenda, to move forward with this resolution?
No.
Uh, resolution authorizing payment in invoice, our criminal justice project, one point one three two, bond construction fund.
I'm going to move, move resi forward.
Motion to move the resolution forward, the recommendation for approval.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. Thank you.
Real quickly, also, I apologize, Brad, and something else, but we don't have to spend any time on this, but just Brad prepared a, 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 if you remember, we, we tabled, uh.
We tabled because of the lights.
Well, no, it was because of the.
Well, we couldn't understand the comments.
It really, the lights weren't involved. We didn't know it was lights.
Right, right.
But there is a, as you read through this, you'll see there's a small section of improvements that need to be done. So, that's what required the waiver.
This is really confusing to me, what, what happened here, because we were certainly getting from planning commission that they were recommending it.
They were.
And they did.
They did.
What's the problem?
Well, they didn't have the same information you've got now.
So, may I ask why the information was not provided?
Well, that, that was done, and, and I think Brad addresses that too. There have been some changes made in process that that shouldn't happen anymore, but that did happen. The, the planning commission, it wasn't their fault, they just didn't, uh.
Well, is it the engineering's fault, though?
Uh, it was a, it was, I'd say it's the fault of the process that just didn't, didn't work well. We didn't get, we didn't get all the information.
Send it back to planning?
Uh.
Huh?
It would, it could just come back to council, and y'all could overturn planning if you want to deny the waiver, or you could approve the waiver.
So, there'd be more information about this then at the council meeting?
We've got it.
Well, this is pretty much it.
Apparently, it says it's the.
But he's denying, he's denying it here.
Yes, he's suggesting.
Or recommending denial.
He is recommending denial based on the.
Additional information.
Yeah, based on what's not been done, to that, there are improvements that need to be done. And our, our question, and the, and the, and the planning commission was that, well, we don't see what improvements need to be done.
Right.
But this points out where there are, it's, it's not much improvement. I don't have no idea what it would cost, but there is a section there that needs to be improved with urban gutter and sidewalk, but it's a small section.
Head lighting. Head lighting.
Well, I don't think the lighting is part of this.
Well, if it hadn't been for the lighting, it would have got approved.
Well, I know, but that wasn't, that wasn't part of the planning commission's.
We lucked out, that's what you're saying.
Consideration.
If we deny, they have to put a lot of, if it's needed anymore.
Yeah.
Didn't make it.
Without comment.
The consulting engineer.
Yeah. The comment was there unaddressed by the developers' engineers, what you're saying. So, we got enough information to go to the council or make our determination.
Hope so.
Next time.
Okay, well, that wasn't really on the.
No, no, I just, I, I asked him, it was, again, it was something.
Thank you, though, thank you for.
After the agenda, and I asked him to come.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Third item on the agenda was a session about the finances.
I forgot about that, or I overweighted a green bread up.
Oh, that's fine.
Uh, yeah, Colby, you and Wyman, we've got a little, you know, y'all know we're not going to get a lot of information yet, but we do have a little more, just.
So, on the sales tax again, how did, the report that we got in April was sales tax from February?
Yes.
The full month.
So, May will be March.
Full month of March.
Yeah, yeah.
So, two months behind.
Right.
Okay, and, and so then on this document that was passed out, now lost it, the, the sales tax, the CIP, CIP, uh, fund.
Sales tax.
As April sales tax, that's actually February, that was collected in February, is that right?
We still, we still call it April sales tax.
April, right.
But just, there won't be any of the COVID stuff related in this number.
Not much, at least.
Not much, not much, we saw.
Turn your mic on, Mayor.
Colby, would you turn the, the mic on, please, apparently?
Let me see.
He's got.
Podium mic, there you go, now you're on.
Thank you.
So, there we go. This, this is reflecting the month of February that we had the thirteen point four percent increase. You'll see quite a big jump in the highlighted areas, sales tax from April, it's up at three hundred and thirty thousand near the top there. The reason that number is seeing such an increase is because whenever they take that second penny, we divide that into the forty-five, fifty-five split, and then the forty-five percent, we deduct the debt service payment on the bond we just refinanced. So, this is the first month that we're seeing, we're capturing the, the savings in the debt service, bond restructuring. So, that's why you see an increase there, and that, that's why my suggestion has been that if we do see a shortfall, which we will in the general budget, use the unreserved CIP balance, because that's where you're seeing all your savings.
And the unreserved balance you're saying comes from the savings we had due to refinancing, that's not, wouldn't ordinarily be reflected in our CIP money?
That's correct. It will flow through into your unreserved.
Yeah, you get the sales tax, but, but the additional, the additional savings is going to show up.
We would not see this savings other than if we had not done the refinancing.
Right, well.
Yeah.
Not this much, yeah, yeah, right.
This is going to bump up your unreserved CIP balance to over a million now, and that is already adjusted for, as we've, as you brought up in January, let's go ahead and account for the two million being transferred. So, even with that being accounted for, you're still over a million dollars now in unreserved CIP.
Well, actually, it says one point five.
No, one point oh four one.
It's highlighted down at the bottom.
No, I think, I think Jeff's talking about the, the line item.
Transfer to general fund.
Well, there's, there's already been five hundred thousand dollars actually transferred, but one point five.
It was already transferred five hundred?
Right, the two million was already put in.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah, it, but five hundred thousand has actually been transferred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There wasn't a whole lot of information, and, and actually, this just came out a few hours ago. We didn't want to wait till the next committee meeting to roll it out to you, so you will be getting all this in your Dropbox. And then also, on the revenue expenditure summary that you have there, last month, we were able to show you that there was about a two-point-one-million-dollar surplus. Whenever you take what we've brought in, and, and the expenses that we have, we have increased that by about two hundred thousand dollars. So, we're at two-point-four-eight-two million ahead of where we were projecting to be at this point.
Until we see the numbers next month.
That's right.
We're going to take a hit, but I'd a lot rather be where we are now than where we could have been.
That's right.
So, so, but for the month, let's focus on the month of April, though.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's February sales tax that are reflected on here, correct?
Yes.
For not only our city's sales tax, but also what we get from Washington County?
Yes.
That would be February.
Revenue, yeah.
Okay, so, have, first line is monthly, what we budgeted, what we were expecting our revenues to be, I guess, budgeted.
Yes.
Expectations, and what we actually received for April, difference is below what we were expecting.
Right, but there's, because our expenditures are less than that, we still were two hundred thousand to the good for this month.
Okay.
And the city sales tax was up eighty-seven.
And that's, and that, you follow that through to where year-to-date, that's where you see that?
Two point four.
Increase, yes?
Under year-to-date.
Well, yeah.
Well, the excess rev, are you talking about the excess revenue line at the very bottom?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that goes over to the difference, so.
Between cumulative and budget and year-to-date, right?
Yeah, we are, the city as a whole, from, from January one until today, we are two-point-four-eight-two to the good, above where we expected to be.
But, but you were talking about not our, our expenditures, but our expenditures are, we were expecting our expenditures to be seven hundred and seventy-eight, and they were only five hundred and seventy, is that right?
Yeah, so we were.
So, we actually made a little money there.
Yes.
No, we didn't spend as much, we had made.
Well, we didn't spend as much. We weren't as bad off as we thought we might be.
Right, we spent two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
But also, what we're looking at when we budget, we're looking at the, at the budget for April, but actually, we're looking at the, the revenues for, for February.
Right.
So, we're not really looking apples to apples with our, because you have a straight line with your expenditure for your budget, but you don't have the straight line for the revenue company. company.
Yep.
Well, let me make sure, I'm sorry, Colby, so then you go over to the next line on cumulative budget, and you have revenues for the year, cumulative budget, or what we expected to spend for the year was 12,000, 12,000, 944,000, right?
Yeah, that's what we budgeted for the year.
That's what we expected, that's what we budgeted. But then you go down to expenditures, and we actually spent 15 million.
Well, remember, whenever we were in the budgeting process, you're looking at also having to transfer 2 million, remember, there was a shortfall, and that's why we transferred money over from CIP.
CIP to the general.
Right.
Okay, but anyway, on this chart, though, it shows our expenditures being 2.4 million more than what we budgeted, correct?
Our expenditures?
I'm sorry, our, the difference, the difference, the difference.
The difference, yeah, considering expenditures and revenue.
It's a negative 2.4. So isn't the difference over here, shouldn't that be in parentheses?
No, because your budget, remember, whenever we budget, we're, we're going over and, and we're in need for the CIP to transfer 2 million over, actually, they requested 3, and we said, no, we'll do 2. But then you also have to consider that, you know, as we said in, in January, I believe, we spend 92% to 95% of our budget. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's still going to look negative at this point. And, and this does not reflect the money, the, the 1.5 million left to transfer over either.
Yeah, but what are you saying the 2.482 is?
So, so basically, the 2.482 is saying that overall, we have brought in, under cumulative budget, total revenue at the top, that total revenue line, we had budgeted 12.944 through that date, but we brought in 13.794. So if you go down all the way to the bottom on expenditures, we had budgeted 15,419,000...
Oh, I see now, okay, I apologize.
Yeah.
So we were, we're ahead for year-to-date in revenues.
And we're below expenditures.
Below expenditures, okay.
Which gets you to the 2.482.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Our NAICS code, whenever we brought that in, it looked like, I believe, Wyman, weren't we at about $100,000 from the internet sales tax? The internet sales tax? Okay, so I guess that came in at about 130, which is well above what we have been.
What did we do last year, this time? So we didn't split it out?
Right.
So it's, we're up basically 100K a month.
They started collecting it mandatory about July, yeah, about mid-year.
And you're, you're going to see that number increase, too, as people haven't been going shopping as much in stores, they're able to order online, which that brings that sales tax money back to us. So instead of going to Cabela's and Rogers, or someplace in Fayetteville, if they order it online, we get to capture that sales tax, so... Yes, that's going to be up there in the, in the revenue.
Brian, we don't get a, what y'all see with sales tax is just the, the number, when we do our sales tax, like that 13-point-whatever percent that we were up in, in April.
13.4.
But we get a, we get a report, and we can, we can send that to y'all if we're not already doing it, may already be doing it, a report that breaks out the different sectors, and it'll show online sales, it'll show general merchandise, it'll show fuel, it'll show...
But, again, that internet's got a two-month lag in it, so our...
Well, it does, yeah.
Our internet sales are probably up, could be doubled what, what we saw for February.
Yeah, and then the last page you have there, something I printed out, The Economist that I've been trying to follow, you know, nobody is, is, as you are well aware, as Dr. Fauci said, the models are only as accurate as the assumptions you put into them. So one good piece of information that I've highlighted on your third handout there, the unemployment rate provided by the Bureau of Labor Statistics shows that in the Fayetteville, Springdale, Rogers metro area, unemployment went from 2.5 to 3.5, and they were actually anticipating that being much higher, reflective of the month of, month of March. Now, keep in mind, March, we started getting directives in the middle of the month, so this is not a full month, it will increase as they're projecting, but they were saying that March would have a, a higher unemployment rate. And on the next page, Fayetteville, Springdale, Rogers metro area, we're still 2% higher in non-farm, non, non-farm payroll employment, still up 2% over this time last year, even though for the month of March, we're down .4. So that's, that's good information.
There's also in the narrative just above that, that actually puts some of those percentages into a number, help you, help you put it in perspective.
They're saying that we, that translates into about 1,000 jobs in this metro area were lost in March, according to the people who filed for unemployment. But we should start getting some very real numbers here in less than a month, that you'll be able to look at and actually sink your teeth into.
Thank you.
Colby?
Watch if we shut up, we're gone.
I'm done. You further business for finance? No? Good.